They they just put me in trouble.
Love you. I got in there. Ten, I thought it down. Play. Yes, that's really it. It's one point eight three. It's right. A whole time. Dude. We got it. But we we call it a big step. We used to have a griddle. Saw the ten. Six, seven, eight. Yes, no. He got the B. That is the way. I've never. Well, I've never ran a griddle. And he saw and told me. That he must have missed whatever it was. That. They got that. Well, the bug is like that. It is. No, I'm saying it. But I think this is really getting them, but. We've got three months. It's a break. I got used to all the times you had. When I first got there. The wheels went like a deep end. You know, these old build tires, you know, like grand sizes. They gave them over. Since months later, they moved on. So I don't know, since months later, it's even selling this very cheap. So I put the guts money. You need class every time. If they weren't at all, so I think it's on their turn. Here's the thing. Now, if it was us, I mean, around. And I'll support us. Our streets.
I want to open.
Are you? Burns. Unless I was one here. Okay. Well, motor. Is that really slow or something? Hey. So we made it so.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, Dan.
All right.
How are you guys?
All right.
Small, but what's your life, huh?
Yeah, Chris, how are you?
Good.
Today's the day.
For what?
Yep. Would you?
Okay. 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 All right. Party book.
I saw. I just want to ask you. Yeah. See, that'd be close. There are few people who suggest. Uh, where do you know? Two, one, four, eight. What else is up?
All right. They changed. They were champion. I was giving that up. Fashion.
Oh, that's the air.
Same little side.
You know, monster.
By the way, I have to give. I don't know how man, that's my thought. Oh, I don't know. I would have reported. Yeah. All right. You gotta keep each other. I imagine that's enough before that. My father was Chris today.
All right, it's nine o'clock. We are going to get our meeting started. And if you would please stand. Uh, and Commissioner Barton will lead us in our opening prayer.
My dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the rain. Uh, thank you for everybody being present and just, uh, be with this court here and then help us make the best decisions that, uh, we need this county for it to grow and for the future. And just watch us all and just let us, uh, serve you in the best way we can. We pray all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. All right, pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state under God, one indivisible. Thank you. You may be seated. And I would like to remind everybody to silence their cell phones. So, uh, uh, we'll call this meeting to order at nine oh one. And, uh, uh, we have a quorum. All the commissioners and the county judge are present. General announcements. I would like to first announce that we have next Thursday, May the first is, uh, National Day of Prayer. And we have scheduled to have the ceremony in the district courtroom on the third floor at twelve fifteen to twelve forty-five. So if you would like to come up and, uh, uh, participate in the National Day of Prayer, you're welcome to do so. Uh, I would like to give a, uh, update on the debris pickup. We are currently working in precinct four. We should be completed in about three days. And then we will move on to precinct one. And, uh, we have picked up a total of thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty cubic yards of trees that have been down since, uh, last May. And so, uh, precinct two is complete. Precinct four will almost be complete. And then we'll move to precinct one. So, uh, next, I'd like to get an update about our, uh, litigation and process with the battery energy storage facilities by our district attorney.
Joe, as the court knows, uh, from the resolution passed two weeks ago, the county filed, uh, a petition for a temporary restraining order against the corporations who are involved in developing the Amador Best facility in the uh, southwestern part of the county precinct two. Um, that T R O was granted two weeks ago today. It's by law good for a period of two weeks. I have been negotiating with counsel for those corporations. They have agreed to an extension of the T R O that was filed yesterday. So the T R O is in place for another two weeks while we continue to work toward, uh, seeing if there is any type of agreement that they are willing to make that would satisfy us with regard to the required testing that they have not done yet. Um, if they can produce those test results, um, then they probably will not be necessary for further litigation. But if they refuse or cannot produce those, uh, passing test results that are satisfactory to the fire marshal, then we will go forward with the litigation and that would either be two weeks from today, unless there's another extension. But so far, the T R O is in effect through May the seventh that prohibits them from bringing any batteries in into our county anywhere um, at this time until further order of the court.
Thank you for that update. Are there any more general announcements?
We got a, our employees.
Okay. If you would like to recognize employees.
Yeah. I'll go down there.
For years in service.
I've got two today. Uh, versus a window or cedar, as we call, uh, Hanes. He's one of my, there's only four left when I got there. He's one of my two of the four originals. Uh, he's been with us for ten years. Been for probably. Same like. Oh, with little, uh, you've been doing a dump truck and he's happy as digging wine. So he's a good employee. Appreciate it. Cedar, good for tenure. Make sure I get around. Well, dude. Thanks for nice news. Hope your shirt's happy, though. All right, right here. Let's do it again. Thank you. Awesome. And the next one is, uh, Tommy Ehl. He's a, he's a foreman out there. Uh, he takes me a lot of headaches. Um, and, uh, I'm not gonna be biased, but I think we got the best roads in the county. And, uh, he's the one that headed it up. But, uh, Tony's been with us for twenty years, I think, on precinct four, right? We've been with us for twenty. There's been. Twenty years. Ben, look at it. The child I don't.
And now I'd like to present to Mr. James Worthing, who has been, uh, in precinct two. We have the, the absolute finest looking fellows that work for our. And I'll tell you what, it's. James Worthing, he's been with us for five years, uh, on, on our, uh, on our crew out there and, and does fabulous job. And, and, uh, so I'm, I'm very pleased to present you this five year pin. And, uh, I still do appreciate all your hard work out there.
Thanks, sir. Good job.
Not bad that, uh, James, uh, may be, uh, a future precinct two commissioner. Uh, uh, you know that he has interests, so yes, sir. Be close.
All right, any more announcements? All right, we will now move on to item number three, public comments. Uh, the public has a opportunity to give five minutes discussion on any agenda item. And, uh, this is my list right here. I will start. First one, we have Jackie Reisner. Who's is going to speak on courthouse issues, I assume that's number twelve. Okay.
Like a gentleman. I'm Jack Reister. And I was trained that if you have a complaint, don't come complain, come with an idea or solution. And that's why I'm here today. I always, I gotta give you a little bit of history. I was born and raised in the Van Zet County. I'm gonna read this instead of it separately because it probably goes faster. Because I could get off on a tangent that apparently didn't, well, no. I was born and, and raised in Van Zet County for the first twenty-eight years. Uh, during that time, I served as an ag science teacher and did a tenure as a Van Zet County Fair President. I've always thought of all the county and tried to give back to it. I left forty-six years ago and began my career as a county extension agent. Uh, I got back to the homeland here six years ago. I served as a county extension agent in Cass, Nakadoches, and Grayson Counties. And why do I tell you about this? It's because it has bearing on what I saw during my time in those counties that might provide some answer for you. Cass and Shelby Counties went through the same issues with their courthouse and the facilities as y'all are facing here today. Uh, very similar counties. Uh, probably not growing like Van Zet County is growing in population because of their, their locations. But, uh, there's no, basically no economic basis, just small businesses and homeowners. And even in Cass County, ninety-five percent of the road is filled dirt. But that does make them a little easier to fix because you can go in and grade them, but they get a little muddy at times, so. Uh, Cass County at that, at that time was using the oldest courthouse in Texas that was still used as a courthouse. Uh, it had been remodeled a couple of times and it was starting to get in, in bad shape then. Uh, they were in a similar situation here. They had a courthouse in other county, uh, owned buildings uh, to house the county government, and they were all starting to get in bad shape and need work. They also outgrew their space and needs, and everything needed a major remodeling. Uh, they bought a complex of metal buildings on the edge of town that had, oddly enough, had been the old Caddo boat manufacturing plant. Uh, they remodeled it, moved to their county offices out there, to that complex. And while they were out, then they sought and received a grant and repaired uh, the old courthouse and they use it for community groups to have meetings in and so forth and so on today. Uh, and it still anchors to Town Square in Linden, Texas. Shelby County is a similar story. Uh, they were facing some of the, some of the same circumstances as Cass County and Van Zet County. Uh, they outgrew and needed major repairs to all their county facilities. Uh, they also bought a vacant building on the edge of town, remodeled it, moved out of the courthouse, received a grant also to go back and make repairs to the old courthouse. And they utilized it the same way as Cass County did. They let community groups have meetings in and so forth. That was a little bit older courthouse and it hadn't been used as a courthouse for quite a while. And it was a brick one. They actually had to replace them with a outside brick wall. You know, it was in pretty tough shape. Uh, and I invite you to meet with, or, you know, visit with the commissioners or judges in those counties. They can tell you a little bit more about it, how they went about it. Uh, I have actually been to several meetings in that old courthouse and it's quite interesting. If you look it up online and get a picture of it, it's quite unique, the one in Shelby County. Now, when I first saw this, uh, as a traditionalist, I thought, well, those new facilities don't look much like a traditional courthouse. They're kind of ugly, I thought at first, before they got through with them. Uh, and I thought, what's the deal? But after visiting with those two county judges who I knew, I realized that they had saved a lot of money by going that route. It was the best alternative for the taxpayers and it met their needs for expansion for the next twenty or so years, and they kept their old courthouses intact. Uh, economy and the least burden on the taxpayers trumped them building a very expensive traditional courthouse. I have advocated for this similar plan, Van Zet County, since I've been back here because I've seen it work now twice. Uh, I even brought the idea of Judge Kirkpatrick, who we used to be one of my old ag students. So I felt like I could talk to him like I used to a long time ago. Uh, and oh, and wrote that idea to him several years ago after I moved back here. Uh, discuss that possibility. I encourage you to consider the plan of buying and remodeling the facility you're looking at, uh, vacate the courthouse and pursue grants to repair it, and then let the public use it. This plan is most economical, I think, best for future growth needs. I suspect a second district court's probably in line for Van Zet County before long. And, uh, the cheapest route for the taxpayers of Van Zet County. I appreciate your time and I'd be happy to provide more details at a further date if you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, I appreciate it. All right, next up is Leanne Reisner to talk on item number twelve.
Good morning. I'm Leanne Reisner and I do live in Van Zet County also, and I do appreciate you letting me speak this morning. I was able to tour the Van Zet County courthouse and was very surprised at what I saw. And I encourage people to make that tour, especially if you're interested in what's going on, because it was a very eye-opening experience. The fifth floor has documents that are stored there. Some date back that I took pictures of and I maybe even later, but to eighteen ninety-five, I know for sure. And they're deteriorating significantly. The windows don't seal and some of them don't even shut. And the temperature can't be regulated. And there's metal file cabinets any place that they will fit. I wonder when the next cabinet placed will be the one that compromises the structural integrity of the fifth floor. Also, all of the jail structure is still in place, which adds to the weight on the fifth floor. Understand these documents need to be accessed many, many times during the day. The only way I see forward to ensure these documents are handled properly is to purchase the Paul Michael Building to be able to restore the courthouse and protect these documents. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Leanne. And next up, we have Brian Cummins to talk on item number twelve.
Gentlemen, I appreciate the opportunity to come and share my idea with you, ideas with you. I strongly encourage you to move forward and take possession of Paul Michael Building. It's not the most popular decision that you'll probably make, but it's the smart decision. It's smart because you have to have a place to be able to move offices out of and enough space which you don't have. I've worked as county extension agent in this county for nearly twenty years. I served in Grimes County before that and Washington County before that and was an ag teacher in Cass County where I met Jackie. The Washington County courthouse is very similar to this one. It was built a year later than this one, but nearly the same floor plan. They've probably done a better job on upkeep, but I understand, having worked with this county and your financial situation, when you run out of money, you quit doing things. And that was one of the things that was stopped was maintenance on this facility. It's time to pony up and let's get it done. And I strongly encourage you to take possession of that and develop a plan. And my ideas differ from his and differ from all y'alls. I'd like to see you go back and use part of this facility if you can. Because to me, having something that's the center of the courthouse square is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cummins. All right. Next up is Kristy Beckham. You talk on item number eighteen.
Good morning, guys. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. So item number eighteen is a closed executive session, so we're kind of having some speculation here since it's not real clear about what that is. Um, but based on Commissioner Williams' precinct two meeting that you guys had on Monday night, there was discussion there that, um, there's intention of the court to move forward on the Paul Michael Building as an emergency um, expenditure. So I'm gonna read this memorandum that will go a lot better in this, in rather than me speaking, so. Emergency expenditures. Section one 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 point zero one zero B of the Texas Local Government Code states, after final approval of the budget, the commissioner's court may spend county funds only in strict compliance with the budget, except in emergency. Using nearly identical language, sections one 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 point zero four one A and one 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 point zero seven zero A of the Texas Local Government Code state, the commissioner's court may spend county funds only in strict compliance with the budget, except as provided by this section. Section one 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 point zero one zero B applies to counties with populations of two hundred and twenty-five thousand or less. Thus, section one 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 point zero one zero B is applicable to our county. The other two sections apply to counties with a population of more than two hundred and twenty-five thousand or provide an alternate method of budget preparation in counties with a population of more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand respectively. In all three quoted sections, what constitutes an emergency or an exception provided by this section, sections one 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 point zero four one A and one 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 point zero seven zero A, that will permit commissioner's court to authorize an emergency expenditure of county funds not included in and thus not authorized by the approved budget is defined in exactly the same terms. The commissioner's court may authorize an emergency expenditure as an amendment to the original budget only in a case of grave public necessity to meet an unusual and unforeseen condition that could not have been included in an original budget through the use of reasonably diligent thought and attention. So the commissioner's court is authorized under Texas law to approve an emergency expenditure of county funds not included in and thus not authorized by the by the final budget only if the following four test is met. One, there must be a grave public necessity. Two, that creates an unusual and unforeseen condition. Three, that could not have been included in the original budget. Four, through the use of reasonably diligent thought and attention. Unless each element of this emergency expenditure test is met, the commissioner's court is not authorized to approve an emergency expenditure or spend county funds otherwise than in strict compliance with budget. Of course, whether a grave public necessity exists caused by an unusual and unforeseen condition that could not have been included in the original budget through the use of reasonable, reasonably diligent thought and attention is a fact-intensive question. Texas courts generally give great deference to the decisions of commissioner's courts, especially on budgetary matters. However, in this case, it is difficult to characterize the purchase of the Paul Michael Building as a matter of grave public necessity caused by an unusual and unforeseen condition. In my opinion, the possible illegality of the sales contract and the fact that our counties signed a sales contract without having funds budgeted and available to close the deal does not constitute a grave public necessity resulting from an unusual and unforeseen condition. The emergency, if it can be called such, is one of the commissioner's court own making, which in my opinion should disqualify it as an emergency under the statutory language. In short, the need to allocate funds to purchase the Paul Michael Building does not seem to be the sort of unexpected and unforeseen emergency the Texas legislature had in mind when it created the exception to what is otherwise the uniform rule, i.e., the commissioner's court may spend funds only in strict compliance with the budget. Notwithstanding, the commissioner's court will likely characterize these circumstances as constituting an emergency and thus authorize the expenditure of county funds necessary to purchase the Paul Michael Building. At that point, our only recourse in the short term will likely be to file a lawsuit against the county seeking injunctive relief to stop this expenditure. And I'll add that this memorandum was written by Tom Duke, who could not be here this morning. Thanks.
Thank you. Kristin. Uh, next we have Mr. Jim Oise to speak on number twelve.
I want to say it's, uh, a huge word blessing to be able to come as a citizen to participate in, uh, the government. And, uh, it's a great state. It's a great nation. And I want to take a little bit of time to express my concerns. And, uh, again, God's word says there is wisdom in multitude of counselors. And, uh, it followed one need be careful to avoid only having counselors who have monetary gains in mind or in their heart. So, uh, I've invested time and effort in attempt to learn the facts regarding our county's genuine needs and the details of the options that commissioner court has, uh, put forth to this point. Uh, much of the information is conflicting, uh, both on genuine county needs and on the plans to address the allegations. So I ask that please consider in moving forward to include citizen input to join in identifying real county government needs, determining efficient options, communicating such findings to voters and the citizens. Uh, after that, consider their input and put it to a public vote. That's my request. Uh, I'm against inefficient use of taxpayer funds, uh, poor planning and keeping the truth from the taxpaying citizens. Just say here to please be cautious uh, in committing multimillion dollars of taxpayer funds without taxpayer involvement. And without full disclosure, I think, uh, uh, I, I want the truth. When you stand with the truth, uh, you share the truth, the truth is, this county is exploding in, uh, population, creating needs. Uh, and they, they need to be addressed. I'm for making good plans involving experts, not builders necessarily, that would be awarded the contract, say, to build a facility or remodel the citizens who are experts in the field, which need input and try to come up with an efficient plan uh, for the taxpayers. I think, yeah. So thank you for the time. God bless Texas.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. And our final one is Subal to speak on item number twelve.
My tap gag and I scribble, so I hope I can cover it all. Yes, I'm Subal. I'm a lifelong resident of this county. My, we have a land grant that was granted to my great, great grandfather in the center, center war. Uh, my great grandfather was involved in most points to bring the records back to campus years ago. My father helped build this courthouse. So there, nobody around has any more respect for this courthouse than myself. So with that said, uh, the courthouse has never been maintained, therefore there was not enough money to maintain it. This was built in nineteen thirty-seven. The population was six thousand people. What are we now? The population was six thousand people. What are we now? Sixty thousand plus? We have outgrown this courthouse. Even whenever we restore it, it will still not be sufficient. And I do look forward to restoring it to keep offices here, but we need more space. I'm very muchly for purchasing the Paul Michaels building. We need it. We will need all of the space for here and there. The Paul Michaels building, if for some reason you wanted to sell it, it is not going to decrease in value. It will only go up. It is a, the best thing that we can do in my opinion. It's a shame that we have people that are against you. I am not a convicted felon, nor have I served time in prison like we have one of the leaders that has gone forth to lead some of the people talking negative against you people that we have elected you to run our county. We've put our faith in y'all. We want you to run our county. I don't think you're going to make any bad decisions that would affect us. I have my kids, my grandkids that live here and future great-grandkids to come in. So please go forth. Uh, let's see. And like I say, the courthouse is deteriorating. It didn't happen overnight. Uh, you people are not responsible for it. It's gone back for years, years, but we need to, we need to go forth. Even, and like I say, even when the story has, the courthouse is restored, it still will not be sufficient. Uh, so I look forward to y'all making the decision to go forth to purchase the Paul Michaels building so that our county can grow and we will not be a county in Texas that is stagnant. We have, the people are coming to Van Zant County from Dallas. We're almost a metroplex of Dallas County now. How can we not go forth and do for our county? And like I say, we have elected y'all. I respect y'all as our commissioners to run our government. I think you're doing a fantastic job. And please continue on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We will now move on to item number four, which is a consent agenda. Consent agenda is considered routine by the commissioner's court will be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items unless a county judge or commissioner requests an item be removed and consent agenda is considered separately. Are there any items that need to be discussed separately? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, uh, no, all those in favor say aye? Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number five, discuss, consider and take action on the previous awarding of the road and bridge material bid for hot mixed road procedures. Uh, option number three to area-wide paving for the contract period of May first, twenty twenty-five through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Nicole from the auditor's department will work this out for us.
Morning, commissioners and judges. Um, we needed to pick us back on the agenda due to previous awardings on hot mixed road procedures, option number three only, that was awarded to area-wide paving. Um, for the new contract period coming up, the owner had reached out via email, and I think that's in her binder regarding he did not bid how he thought he was bidding. And um, I've asked the gentleman to come. I've emailed and called. His name's Paul Poe. I have not heard from him. I don't know what was the experience. So we just need to see what we need to do. Um, I did provide what price increases that he was wanting to or he was stating he would have to go up on his bids because he missed bid. Um, and that would be over the other bidder that would have won those bids without his price increase. So we need to decide what we want to do on his previous award.
Well, he can't modify his bid price, so therefore he's withdrawing his bid. So it would naturally go on to the next, uh, lowest bidder, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And who would that be?
Um, according to the original bid submitted, it would be the, um, should be to Texana Land and Asphalt. For the option number three of what?
So is, is there a motion to?
Award that bid?
Award the bid to extend a land and asphalt due to the area-wide paving, essentially withdrawing their bid. There, is there a motion?
That's number five, right?
Yeah, we need to withdraw.
Judge, yeah, that's much.
I motion to withdraw.
Okay.
The it was the first, the first.
Withdraw the awarding?
Yeah, withdraw the awarding bid.
All right.
Motion to withdraw the awarding bid.
All right, motion has been made. Second, is there any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor of withdrawing the bid from hot mix, uh, or from
Area-wide.
Area-wide paving, uh, say aye? All those opposed like sign, motion passes. Now we go on number six, discuss, consider and take action of re-awarding the road and bridge material bid for hot mixed road procedures, option number three for the contract period of May first, twenty twenty-five through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So that would be the second, uh, look, uh, one in the lowest builder, builder bidder was Texana Land and Asphalt, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I make a motion and we accept that we in Texas.
All right, there's a motion. Maze, there's a second?
Second.
All right, uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number seven, discuss and consider approval Dawson Creek Phase One subdivision plant located on Van Zant County Road twenty-one fifteen in precinct two. Yeah, Dawson's Creek is, uh, is four lots. Uh, they're all one acre, uh, or greater. Uh, they all have county road frontage onto county road twenty-one fifteen. Uh, is anybody here Finner, Finner or Whittaker? Would you like to say a word or two?
I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but otherwise I'm sure in person.
They've complied with the rules and requirements that we have related to subdivisions and provided everything for the approval. And so I'd make a motion to approve this subdivision, uh, for Dawson Creek Phase One Subdivision Plant.
Second.
All right, motion has been made. Second, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number eight, discuss, consider approval of vacating Fairview Estate subdivision plant located on Van Zant County Road twenty-six twenty-one in precinct two.
Yeah, this is a, uh, uh, an, an undivision of, uh, of property. They had many, many, many years ago, uh, first is, uh, Mr. Stewart here? Feel free to come up. Feel free to come up. This is very interesting. This doesn't happen very often. Uh, tell us how many acres that, uh, that is total?
It's, uh, nine hundred acres total. Uh, we purchased, my family purchased the property about four years ago. On the north part of this property, it was subdivided many, many years ago. You platted that way. So there were, uh, over thirty-nine lots, uh, two acre tracts, four-point-eight acre tracts, multiple acre tracts. Um, of course, uh, this border is twenty-six twenty-one county grid. There was a lot owned by a lady in Florida that's at, and it has a soil conservation lake on it of about forty-five acres. So this land's been an ag for over twenty years. There's no fencing, there's no fences, but any kind of division for these lots. They're just on the north part of this nine-hundred-acre tract, north of the lake. So we, uh, we purchased the entire property, but there were two lots that were not owned by the Bobbin family when we purchased this. One lady in Florida, she decided to sell. We were not able to purchase her property. We actually traded two of the lots in the northeast corner bordering county road twenty-six twenty-one for those four hundred, four-point-eight acre acres. That eliminated anybody in the middle of this property. So now after that, uh, Mr. Cooper owned an adjacent lot down a rock driveway of that property. We sent so two more two-acre lots and everything within the fence is now owned by the Stewart family. So we are wanting to dissolve Fairview Estates. We have no desire to develop it. It would be an ad for as long as we can. Any questions?
And, uh, you know, in this, um, we have signed agreements from those neighbors that are, are in, uh, that, that old. And, and so what we're asking also is to eliminate any dedication of public right of ways, et cetera, that go through there and roads. Uh, and that's really the only public dedication there, there was on, on the, on this property. And then we want to just eliminate those property lines. Uh, anybody that doesn't, that, that, any property not owned by the Stewarts, uh, they're in agreement with this and have no problem with us, um, dissolving this subdivision and any public dedications, which it hasn't been used by the public. There's not anybody that's been traveling on it and it's, this nine hundred acres is, is going, is going to a family that is going to continue to use this property. And, uh, and so, uh, my motion is to e-eliminate the, um, the Fairview Estates uh, with the exception of those four lots that are owned by other individuals.
Yes, and the Jason neighbor purchased them. So he had a house due east of this property.
So in, in effect, he could, uh, uh, eliminate the balance of the Fairview if he wanted to come before us. He can eliminate, but, but my motion today is to eliminate Fairview Estates with the exception of those, with those four lots and, and dissolve the, uh, uh, the dedication, uh, of, uh, the roadways. So that would be four lots on the corner, or two lots on the corner?
It's four two-acre lots that they have already purchased. We do not own anymore, but the road, the fencing, everything that we're asking is in one fence. Everything's, uh, together.
I, I second that.
Did you say you notified somebody? You, you sent out notifications?
They notified, uh, in, in the, uh, and we have signed agreements from the neighbors.
Yes.
So there's no way the county to be liable for anything worth.
I, I second that.
All right, there's a motion has been made. Second, any further discussion?
So in the county clerk's office, we would have a flat probably downstairs in our slides on it. We would have to have something noted and put in that slide. So are y'all going to have us something?
So we've got a new survey of the property for just us. Uh, with new survey, we have letters from each labor. Uh, if there's something in addition, we're happy to do that. We just follow the rules so far.
Okay, yeah. So we're going to need to put something in that slide in case somebody comes up.
That'd be the new survey though, wouldn't it, Susan?
Just to make sure that everything ties back together.
Um, on, on the, on the survey that you have, does it still show those four lots a- as Fairview Estates?
It shows them as a new owner, not as Fairview, but as a new owner, the Jason man.
So Fairview Estates would still be, um, voided since it's in the new name, those, those four lots.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe, I believe that would, that would be the case. And, and as far as that's concerned, uh, I, I would modify my motion. If you'd modify your second to, uh, eliminate Fairview Estates, um, explicitly with road, with road dedications. Uh, and then if they wanted to go back, since it's one owner with eight acres, I, I don't really see, uh, an issue related to that. And we can put the new survey in that slide uh, as, you know, after we complete our work here today and sign it, we can put that new, that new survey in that slide.
Okay.
Does that work, Susan?
Need to make sure we tie it all together.
To, uh, vacate Fairview.
That's amended motion.
Yeah.
All right. So motion has been made and, uh, the unamended motion. And, uh, seconded, uh, is there any further discussion? If not, is there, uh, all those in favor say aye? Opposed like sign, motion passes.
Yes.
You bet. Thank you. Item number nine, discuss and consider approval of somebody help me out.
Napeg.
Napeg Estates Lot One subdivision plant located on Van Zant County Road forty-one oh-six in precinct four.
This is mine. This is one lot, five-point-nine-four acres. Uh, they've turned in all the required paperwork, uh, paid all their fees. Uh, they've done everything we asked them and they've complied with all our rules and regulations. So I motion to approve this subdivision of five-point-nine-four acres of Napeg Estates.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and, uh, seconded, how many lots is that?
One.
One lot, okay. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number ten, discuss, consider appointing a scoring committee to score the request for proposal submissions for engineering analysis services for the jail. Uh, gentlemen, I'm going to ask that we table this. Uh, we had some issues with the request for proposal as it was written. And, uh, we are going to, uh, we've withdrawn it and we are going to reissue it as a request for qualifications, which is appropriate way to do it with an engineering firm. So, uh, is there, uh, a, okay, a motion to table and, uh, Commissioner Barton seconds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss, consider approval of blanket authority for district attorney to spend up to ten thousand dollars without separate commissioner approval for civil litigation purposes.
Excuse me, just one moment.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, I, I put this on the, um, on the agenda today. Uh, we are entering into a time where it may be likely that, uh, as it, as it relates to the battery energy storage, litigation that we're contemplating, uh, that we've actually not contemplating, we're already in, in, involved in. Uh, there will be things that, um, the district attorney will need to, uh, spend money on related to consultants, uh, and, and people that are doing work, uh, on our behalf. Uh, in, as it relates to the battery energy storage and fighting against those, uh, those companies that are trying to promote a green energy here in, in what we're doing. So I want, I want to, uh, I, I want to make it clear that it's not just a, a blanket to, you know, go out there you know, whatever you need. It's, it's specifically related to the battery energy storage and other litigation as necessary, uh, from the commissioner's court perspective. And so, um, uh, if you don't mind, I'd, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. I, I wrote this. I didn't bring my computer, so he's pulled it up here. Uh, motion to allow the district attorney to spend up to ten thousand dollars out of the budgeted zero-one-zero-four-oh-nine-four-hundred legal account for civil litigation purposes. I want to make it more, a little more specific than, than what I had put in the, uh, in the agenda. And so that's my motion to approve that, uh, that, um, for the district attorney.
All right, motion Mazur second.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'm just curious what you might think we're going to have to spend on legal.
Uh, right now we have a temporary restraining order that, uh, has, that's going to be extended. It's just, actually, it's common courtesy in, in the legal profession. I, I think that some may think that that's a oxymoronic, uh, term, uh, you know, courtesy and legal. But it is somewhat common that if one side, we did a temporary restraining order without the other side even being in the courtroom or knowing that anything was going to happen. So that's why a temporary restraining order is temporary and it, and it, and it lasts for two weeks. And during that two-week period, when the other side says, oh, they're upset about something. Uh, they have that amount of time to begin putting their information together. And with something of this size and nature, they can't develop their entire, um, process in two weeks. And so if we didn't just agree to an extension, a two-week extension of the temporary restraining order, it's likely that the judge simply allows that because the judge says you can't expect the other side to come up with their arguments in two weeks. So as it relates to combating the arguments that they have, we will need consultants, we will need people that, that we can put on the stand and say, hey, are the batteries, uh, dangerous? Uh, is, you know, so we have somebody that we can call as a witness on our side. So that's really what the, what the process is. And I'll let the district attorney fill in a few additional blanks.
And, and I really appreciate Commissioner Williams putting this on the agenda.
And and I really appreciate Commissioner Williams putting this on the agenda. As you guys know, we had to have a a emergency meeting two Mondays ago, I think, um, uh, over fifty five dollars. Litigation costs money and litigation has time constraints. I visited with several other counties after this came up, counties that are joining us, and most of them already have something adopted where litigation expenses can always be ratified instead of having to be uh approved in advance. But the situation we were in um about ten days ago, after we filed the temporary restraining order, the law requires that I have that served by a process server um on the other side. There were five corporations on the other side. Those have to be served. Um, the fee for that was a, well, two of them had to be sent to the Secretary of State because the corporations were out of state. You have to send them to the Secretary of State of Texas with a check. They won't take a credit card unless you drive to Austin and do it in person. So and the fee is fifty five dollars. So I needed two fifty five dollar checks that had to be done under a time deadline because it's litigation. And you guys had to have a an emergency meeting to approve getting me two fifty five dollar checks for service of process and litigation. With what's coming, we can't operate that way. My office is essentially a law firm. It's essentially the largest law firm in the county. And for me to have to wait two weeks to do anything in litigation for you guys to approve it in advance is just not gonna work. We're gonna lose, right? Because we're gonna end up violating some rules about how quickly things have to be done in this kind of situation. So um because we don't have a a longstanding policy adopted by the court that allows for ratification of litigation expenses instead of preapproval. Um, uh, what I what Commissioner Williams suggested was that that we do a specific motion regarding authorization, so the treasurer's office um can issue checks if I need them um up to ten thousand dollars. If it's more than ten thousand dollars, clearly I have to come back. And in the end, as I told you in executive session before we, well, when you did the resolution, as we discussed, um, it's gonna be more than ten thousand dollars. It's gonna be significantly more than ten thousand dollars. But um when we get to that point, I'll come back to the court. But when it's small things like fifty five dollars here and there, um, the preapproval yeah, is the only way we can successfully get through this lawsuit.
And will these issues that you would spend money on, would those be items that we would we would discuss and ratify at the next?
Yes, they'll be they'll be in the bills for ratification. Yes, absolutely. So you guys will see it and the public can see it. Uh, but just we can't wait two weeks for a meeting before we have service of process done or something else that the law requires.
Thank you.
Okay. And we are we squared away with the auditor on this? I mean, like, we good with that?
Well, I'm just with civil litigation, like, would you normally spend that out of your forfeiture fund or something like that?
No, for criminal only. This is the line item that Commissioner Williams read that is actually controlled by the county uh certificate expenses from now.
Thank you for the explanation.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss and consider resolution regarding the CO for the courthouse restoration of nineteen thirty North Trade Days Boulevard renovation.
Yeah, I I put this on the um on the agenda uh due to talking to two different citizens. They said, we don't know what and we heard, you know, actually in the um in the public comments today, we heard that you guys don't have a plan, you don't have, well, wh- what's difficult about county government is that we can't, I can't pop into Brandon's office and and then pop into Bobby's office and make plans because we have to talk about it in a public setting. We gotta talk about it here. So today is not a vote on whether to issue a certificate of uh of obligation. Uh, but I would mention a couple of things that that may be beneficial uh is that a certificate of obligation doesn't mean that your taxes go up. For example, the county can't go to a bank and say, hey, we wanna borrow some money uh i- i- the way a company or an individual does. But through a certificate of obligation, we can say, we wanna borrow this amount of money to do whatever project it might be. And it is possible also to pay that out of our uh funds that we have budgeted throughout the next five or ten years, whatever the case may be, without it impacting the taxes. But what I will tell you is that is that uh in order to renovate the courthouse, we have a lot of of discussion still to go, and that's why we're talking about it now. And that's why I brought this resolution up. This resolution here, uh it it specifically states, and I'll I'll pass this out to the to the folks here as as I completed it. The um the resolution, it talks about, and this is my own, nobody else. Um, I I did send it to the judge earlier, let him know that this is the resolution that I was gonna be bringing. But it says the Van Zant Commissioners Court, having considered the options and potential for re- renovating nineteen thirty North Trade Days Boulevard and the existing courthouse, resolves that if a tax increase would be necessary for renovation of any county building, the Commissioners Court will propose a bond election and not issue or propose a certificate of obligation, which the citizens of Van Zant shall vote to approve or deny. So the purpose of my resolution is to say that if taxes are gonna be raised through a certificate of obligation, that it in my mind, it has to go to a bond. You can't really put uh a uh an obligation on the citizens that they haven't had an opportunity, not only through our workshops, and we've had a few. We have, we have these meetings every other week, and you have the option to talk about issues related to, as we've seen today. We do have issues with this courthouse. We do have issues uh with needing some additional room. But if we can issue a certificate of obligation pledging our current revenue, it would not increase taxes. The certificate of obligation would allow us to do the work on these buildings uh through our revenue by tightening our belt in 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 some areas, whatever the case may be. That's the only way that I would vote in favor of a certificate of obligation is if it doesn't raise your taxes. If something comes before the court in my mind, and I only speak for myself, but if it's gonna raise your taxes, I want you to have the opportunity to vote on it. And that's why I put this on the agenda, so that each one of these commissioners would have the opportunity to tell you in public what their uh what what their thoughts and feelings are related to this. And I will be bringing additional agenda items for those things that people have questions about. But I did notice on Facebook, there were several comments that we were voting on certificate of obligation. Uh, you know, we were, we were about to do this or we're about to do that, but they they don't ever talk to me. Those folks don't ask me anything. They don't have a conversation. I had conversations with folks who showed up to the to the quarterly meeting, and I have a Facebook page. And every time we have a quarterly meeting, this is our third one. Everybody is aware of it that that, you know, that follows that page. Uh, I'm so thankful for the Republican Club uh that also posts that uh and several of the other pages that post that uh that meeting. And we have fifty sixty people uh that that came out this week, but you're all welcome. Despite what precinct you may, you know, you you may live in, uh, you you're all welcome to to join that. And we have a very rigorous question and answer session, but that's why I have it here, and that is my resolution. And these guys can certainly uh speak their mind on it and and modify this uh as we go along.
I'd like to say something on it. First of all, I think we all have a plan. It may be all different in small ways. I don't I don't know what these four gentlemen's plans are, but we're all pretty similar. The first thing is, number one, we all wanna keep this courthouse. It all has to be restored. It's gonna cost money. We have to get out of here. So there's the Paul Michael Building purchase. Once we get the Paul Michael Building, if we get the Paul Michael Building purchased, we can set a plan for everyone in this courthouse to move out. And then we're gonna have to go to a bond to get this courthouse uh redone. Because ten million, nobody knows the number on what this is gonna cost. We know we have a ten million dollar grant. We don't know if it's gonna cost fifteen million or fifty million to get the whole thing done. We have to find that out first to to get the courthouse. Uh, so nobody wants to get rid of this courthouse. We want to, we want to restore this courthouse, but we have to be out of here. And with the Paul Michaels building, in order for us to get out of here, we have to have a functional operating space, which is what this CEO is about. And kinda like Cliff said, get this information, that the the new Facebook journalists are just, they're just talking heads. They're they're not telling the truth, or they they they're not telling the facts. And they don't say, when Cliff was talking about raising taxes, that the voter approval rate in Mitch and Cliff and Bobby were on the court at this time, but me and the judge were, the voter approve, the voter approval rate for this year's taxes was forty two cents. And we said, well, maybe we should lower it down to forty on our own. It should have been forty two, but we lowered it to forty. As a commissioners' court, we, because we had thought, if something like this comes up, that will make up the difference and would raise the taxes. But nobody talked about, we lowered the taxes on our own below the voter approval rate. Nobody has heard that. Uh, and I think that's important for people to know. And I have, I agree that people need to uh voice their opinion and have a vote on it. But we do have a plan, and if y'all wanna know the plan, come talk to us. And don't go look at social media because it's all dis- disrupted. That's my opinion.
My opinion of it is that I appreciate the people standing up and talking for the Paul Michael Building. I do agree with the Paul Michael Building, but what has not been brought out in anything, anything at all, I have not seen anything about it on Facebook and all that portion. I'm not a big Facebook person, but uh there's always possibilities that we have other properties here that when we move people out of, we can sell. The there's that possibility and put that money towards that to help the cost of that. That there is nobody, nobody has said anything about that. But that possibility is there to help on that, to purchase the Paul Michael Building and remodel it. Uh, and I'm 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 just, I've sat through all of the budget meetings this past year. These the the past court, they did lower the taxes, uh took it on their own to do it. I hadn't heard nothing from them. Nobody said anything about that at all. Yeah, uh, but I think that uh I think that we have a plan. I think that there's more there than being said. Uh, and I agree with Brandon. My phone's open all the time, and I take some pretty good rippings on that phone. Yeah, but anybody here is welcome to call me, talk to me about it. If you see me somewhere, you're welcome to talk to me. That's that's my thought on it.
Well, uh, when I came into office, uh, Dr. Patrick was uh said that uh we need to have somebody that knows how to plan for the future. And he was glad that I got into office because they had just gone through that commissioners' court. Uh, prior previous eight years had been going basically a cleanup of the prior year's financial conditions. And I am so proud of what they had done and how they, but again, in the process, a lot of things didn't get done because we couldn't afford it to do it. And so now they have got us in a financial condition, good good financial condition with money in the bank. And so now's the time to do the planning for the future. And uh the presentation I did in the district courtroom, and I I've done it uh several other times, i- is where I believe that the purchase of the Paul Michael Building is one of the best decisions for the future for this county. And it literally half the price of what surround, what other counties in this state have done the same thing. Okay, so twenty five million is what it what it would cost to do. And and that may include the courthouse renovation too, depending on how how well we do with Paul Michaels Building. They estimated it at two hundred, uh, the original estimate from the architect. And again, we don't have costs, we don't have hard costs because we don't even have design. Okay, on on what we're going, we would do, so we can get costs on it. But the estimate that the architect used was between a hundred and fifty and two hundred dollars a square foot for the reconstruction renovation. And uh we use the high end of that, and that's sixteen million dollars is what it came in. Then you have the uh all the other fees, so it came up to be a total of nineteen million. And uh to be able to go forward and do this and to do it now while we have opportu- opportunity because there, as you're well aware, there's not a lot of other facilities available uh in this county that are in this location close to in Canton that we can do this with. And it uh allows us to expand for the or plan for the future uh for the next twenty and forty years. Okay, we would have space and we would have it a very economical amount. If we wait, okay, for if it's twenty million dollars to do this renovation, we wait one year, six percent inflation, it's twenty one million. You wait ten years, that twenty million dollar renovation becomes thirty seven million dollars. So now's the time to try to move forward. And in my viewpoint, that it's the best uh for the long term for this county. And it's uh, but again, I agree that it's up to this commissioner court to sell it and that we have to go to the voters and ask them to pay for it. We have to, we have to through a bond election. Uh, I'm firmly uh uh in agreement with that, needs to go to a bond election. We need to show them what it's gonna be and why we're gonna use it. And so that that uh I'm excited, and I'm gonna work work toward it and uh until we we come up with a final decision.
I think they know their decision on the the decision with remodeling the Paul Michaels Building also affects the decision of this courthouse. The one that's here, it's it's all tied together. Uh, and and I I think we have a court that's trying to do something with this, trying to move forward. And if I just, if y'all have any questions on what it is, we have phones and we're easy to find. You can come ask us, and we'll tell you what's going on.
Also, the presentation I did up in the district courtroom, I will do for anyone. Okay, uh, five people or more, so just call me and ask them, set it up, and I'll do it. Because every time I'm giving that presentation, people understand, you know, what what we're doing, what we're trying to do. We're not trying to uh build a Taj Mahal. We're trying to do something for the future of this county and planning now and uh in that regard, so.
Do my turn.
You're up, if you wanna say anything.
I do. Um. Last year, we started talking about the courthouse renovation of bond that you uh a grant that you had obtained, and it was rejected because we were, we switched saddles in the middle of that because Paul Michael Building came open.
That's not right.
I don't.
We switched saddles, we switched.
No, that that is not true.
I don't think.
Not true at all.
Paul Michael wasn't even discussed.
Well, why why was it?
We rejected, we rejected the grant because we now have a cost and what it would take to restore this courthouse. Had nothing to do with Paul Michaels Building at all.
Okay.
Paul Michaels didn't come in until December.
Well, we jumped on it pretty quick.
Mm hmm.
And about the same time, we started talking about a hundred forty five million dollar jail. Is that right?
That was in January.
About the same time. And we ain't been here very long. So we say we have a plan. We keep talking about, we have a plan. We we have a plan. We're gonna spend twenty million dollars on the Paul Michael Building. Is that right?
Yes.
Well, that's a plan. Is that the plan or not the plan?
That's what we got the bond for.
Okay, so, or and so in the middle of that, we start talking about, what are we gonna do at the courthouse? And there was, th- these were phrases, the courthouse, uh, these are phrases I heard. Courthouse about to fall down. One more brick, the courthouse falls down. Courthouse about to fall down. One more brick, the courthouse falls down. Wasn't no truth in that. We, we'll blow it up. Let it, get rid of that, give, put a fountain in the middle of the square and let people eat dinner here. I heard that. Is that, is that a plan? I'm upset about it, because. It hasn't, we haven't been consistent. First of all, the first failure we might had was, we didn't convince the public. That we really had a need to, to, to refurbish courthouse. We didn't convince them first. We didn't convince them that we had that need. We never have convinced them that we need a new jail. We haven't convinced the public clearly that that's what we need to do.
I think you can just look around this courthouse and do it the fourth and fifth floor. It's not rocket science, this thing needs refurbished.
I got a lot of things I needed to, at my yard over there. I need, we need new roads. We need better roads, we need better infrastructure. There's a lot of things that we need. I'm not saying that we don't need it. I'm not saying them against Paul Michael building. I've been consistently saying I'm for the Paul Michael building. I'm, I'm for that. But we haven't been consistent. We haven't been consistent on our figures. Um, we have an architect that drew up something for us down there. Do we, we don't, do we have to use, um. Do we have to use that architect's con- contractors, or can we use that local? We can't do it with the jail. Can we, can we rebuild the Paul Michael building with local contractors? Does anybody know? Nobody knows. So we have a plan.
Tony, you have something?
No, I, I think we have a plan, uh, and.
Have a plan.
And, and we, that's what this is about. We can, we can use this time to talk about. Uh, our plans and our thoughts, or we can say, the rest of you guys are, are, you know, are silly and numbskulls. That, I mean, you can, you can take that. What, some folks want us. Folks say.
Okay, I'm, I apologize to the court. I just don't know what the plan is.
Some folks have said that, why don't we rent up all the vacant buildings that are around the courthouse? That's, and, and move everybody into there. We have, we have a number of people that come in here every day that, that. We need to direct to offices within this, within this courthouse. But if we were to tell them, you gotta go over, you gotta, in order for this thing, you gotta go over that building. But in order for that thing, you gotta go over that building, and some folks would, it would be frustrating to, to be able to do that. And it would be an IT nightmare, because you'd have to put servers in each one of these. And the security associated with, with the servers and electronics of it would be very difficult.
That's true.
So tha- that's what makes the Paul Michael, uh, a, a particular benefit uh, right now. Is that we can, we can move the folks over there, we can renovate that. If you renovated uh, all the buildings in the downtown area, the county would pay for that out of pocket. And then when our lease was up, the lease money is gone, and the renovations become the property of the owner.
You had to have a maintenance team of about a hundred to go through.
Right, so, so, so uh, a- as we considered these things. And some folks think that there's not a plan, because I'm actually listening to what folks are saying and what they write on there. Even, you know, I, I, in some of those cases, I weed through what they're, what they're saying and take out, you know, good. In fact, the reason we're even talking about this today is because two people over the last two weeks said, hey, why don't you, why don't you tell us what you're thinking? So I said, well, let's put it on the agenda and have a discussion. So that's why we're putting this, is so that we can talk to you about, and then we're gonna get feedback over the next two weeks. I'm gonna be reading what, you know, what's posted and thinking about these things. But it makes sense to move the folks out of here into one location to consolidate uh, those outside departments. Into one particular area, sell those buildings, use that money for our renovation, or build out, whatever the case may be. And then move, move a, a portion uh, of those, of those folks back. Some have said, well, once you said ten percent, and once you said fifty percent, once you said seventy-five percent, well. I'm saying that there are other elected officials that have a say in what's going on with their departments. Uh, there are other elected officials that, that will want to weigh in on this as well. I believe that if you can get a fifty-fifty, the, the courts need to be over there, because there are.
You haven't even said anything about the next, the four or five years, we're gonna have a second district court.
That, and that very well could be, but, but there are certain constitutional rights that folks have. That right now, with the way we're set up here, those are, you know, the, there are problems with us being here. Uh, it, with some of our courts. And so we, we do need, we do need additional room, we need renovation. And we need renovation here. Some folks say, slow down, slow down, slow down. Well, they have slowed down on this courthouse for, some say fifty, sixty years. And they haven't done what needs to be done here. We need to get ourselves in motion, in action. And then as you learn new things, you modify, you, you modify what it is that you're doing. You modify your plan. You don't set your plan, and this is something I learned, so, you don't set your plan. And then despite everything or anything you hear, you don't modify. That's the worst thing that could possibly happen.
So, so let me ask you something. So we, we said we weren't gonna, we're not gonna raise taxes. You said something about that. We're not gonna raise taxes.
Without, without allowing the people to have a voice in.
On the Paul Michael building?
On anything.
Okay.
I, I'm not interested in.
So you wouldn't raise taxes on anything?
I wouldn't raise taxes for any renovation, or any build out, or, or anything else. Unless the people had an opportunity for a bond. That's my personal thought.
Because we have twenty million down there. And then we possibly just listen to other people talk. I don't know what it's gonna cost to re- nobody is a hundred.
Nobody knows.
Nobody knows exactly what it's gonna cost to re- to renovate this, but it may cost us a few million dollars here. And we are obviously not done with the jail thing. We're not done with it. It's been pushed back. But we're not done with it.
Yeah, yeah. We're not done with the roads either.
And we're not done, I know, I understand that. I'm just saying, I'm saying that like.
Is an employee cost.
I'm saying. What is our priorities? What is this, what is our priorities as a county? Is it a bigger courthouse, or is it better roads? Is it trying to equip our sheriff to protect us, or is it built behind the Paul Michael building? Because I don't believe. In my own, the way I operate, and maybe I'm just too small-minded, but I don't believe we can do all of it. At one time. And I don't believe. I don't believe we're done with it. Like, I wa- like, I'm, I'm alright with the Paul Michael building. But I'm not alright with Paul Michael building, the courthouse, and the jail in one year. I ain't alright with it.
I don't think anybody is, and I don't think anybody in this resolution has indicated any interest whatsoever. This resolution is the agenda item, first of all, and just because we do the courthouse.
I'm just telling you what I'm saying.
But just because we do the courthouse.
I'm just telling you. That's what I'm telling you what I think.
I, I.
This is our time to tell everybody what we think. I'm telling everybody what we think.
But it's not this court's decision, the, when you bring the jail, which has nothing to do with this. The jail is gonna be on a bond, this courthouse is gonna be a bond. It's the people's decision. Ain't this court's decision? If the people say, vote yes for the jail bond, vote yes for the courthouse bond, hey, it's all done. If they vote no, it's not our decision. It's the court, it is the people's decision what they wanna do on a bond vote.
Outstanding.
And quite honestly, if you're working on roads, you don't just forget about everything else in your life. If you're just working on the courthouse, you don't forget about everything else in your life. You've got other things, you got a team. And, and some people um, took on the battery energy storage system. And, and, and other folks didn't participate quite as much. That's okay. There are people that have taken on the uh, you know, the, the grant for the restoration of this building. And others folks have not done quite as much. I'd say the judge uh, is, you know, took that on and did. The lion's share, uh, perhaps of the work uh, in, in the bond, uh, in, in obtaining that potential grant before. And that's okay. We don't all have to be, you know, uh.
Are we going forward with that? Are we gonna go forward with that grant? We'll see, we'll see that grant?
Uh, we can't talk about that, but. Nah, yes, well, the grant will be available again in May of next year to submit. And uh, the commissioner's court will then, you know, depending on where we're at. Uh, whether or not we can apply for it. The good news is, the uh, the uh, houses. Uh, allocated a hundred million dollars for rest, courthouse restoration. Uh, so it was forty-six million last time. So there, and, and assuming that it doesn't get cut way, way back. There, there will be money available again for the courthouse grants every two years that they submitted. So, uh, but I can't say that we're gonna do it until we know where we're at. And what we're gonna, what the situation is with the Paul Michael's building. One of the things that, that. Uh, there, there's a process in, in my mind, okay, there's a process in which things go. And I, I wanna go back to the grant that we, we did, we submitted and won. But I had not put together the cost of relocation. And why? Is because, A, I had no idea if we're gonna get the grant, and B, I'm not gonna waste a lot of time. Finding out all these buildings, term, contracting, uh, contacting contractors to figure out what it would cost to renovate it. To get it up to speed, uh, on, on, not knowing if we're gonna really need that. It's not a good use of my time to do that. And we, we had ninety days from the time in which we were awarded the contract to make a decision. And that was not gonna be enough time, cuz that was a spr- smack dab in the middle of those storms, where all the trees were down, and we had a lot of things going on. But there's a whole process, you know, and to, to address your, your concern about, well, are we gonna be able to use local contractors for building? That's, that's not something to discuss right now. It, you, you wor- work on that when you get closer to that timeframe, when you know you're going to be building something. And then you start working on those. I, I don't wanna uh, detract from my other duties and our other duties. By, by trying to plan for things that we don't know if it's gonna happen or not. But my idea is, or my goal is to plan for things that uh, that I can plan for. And, and use my time wisely in that regard. But I do, you know, one of the things that came up, and I think that we need to do before we even commit to these buildings is. We, as a commissioner's court, need to sit down and determine what our priorities are for road, roads. And how we can work together. I really think there's uh, things that, that, that we can do together. That, to help each other out, to get where we need to go, in, in that regard. Put together a plan for the public to say, this is what we wanna do. And uh, I think we owe it to the public, because, you know, they're right. Uh, uh, there's a lot of roads that need work in that regard.
Would y'all say it's a fair assumption? That we're talking about this courthouse, uh, getting it restored. We need, we need more space. We've sold the tax office, they're gonna need a place to go. Uh, DA's office is crowded. In my opinion, I'm asking you all, if it's a fair assumption, the Paul Michael's building hinges on a lot of what can be done. The, the Paul Michael's building, what we decide to do with that Paul Michael's building. Uh, hinges on the decision of what we make on everything else.
It'll have a big factor in it.
I, I think it's, I think it even has a factor to do with whether we get filed for the grant or not. But we gotta, we gotta have a place to go before we do anything else.
Where, where were we going before that? Where, where were we gonna go before?
They didn't have.
We didn't have plan.
They didn't have a plan at all. If, if we have to go out here and rent twenty-five, thirty buildings, then we have to remodel them. Then that's money just thought about there in the yard, you know. We're here, if we buy it, we do it. We have a chuck shot at getting it back, so we're down the road if we choose to.
Which is why that money was not allocated to a budget, because this Paul Michael building did not come up and start talking about it. Until after budget was done.
Budget was done in September uh, of last year, and the Paul Michael's building.
It was October.
Well, no, it was actually December when we started negotiations.
Yeah, but it was not, the money was not budgeted, because the budget was already done for the Paul Michael's building came up.
Okay. My motion's on the table to, to accept the resolution, and my resolution is. In, in. My resolution is. States that uh, Van Zant Commissioner's Court, having considered the options and potential for renovating nineteen thirty North Trade Days Boulevard. And the existing courthouse resolves that if a tax increase would be necessary for renovation of any county building. The Commissioner's Court will propose a bond election and not issue or propose a certificate of obligation. Which the citizens of Van Zant shall vote to approve or deny. So what I'm saying is, pretty clear, in my opinion. All right, the motion's been made as a second. My second. I'll second it. Cuz I'm firmly believe that we got, it's gotta be done with the bond election, or it's not gonna be done. Should be in the voters, in other words, gotta give the voters the choice to uh, choose in that regard. That's right. That's what I believe. That's what I believe. And it's up to us as the commissioner court to sell it to the public, as to what, as to why it's, it's a good investment. And for the taxpayer's money. All right, motion's been made in second. All those in favor say aye. All who oppose like sign. Motion passes for the resolution. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider approval for the uh, approval for the approval. Uh, of bond renewal for Lisa Hutcherson, Assistant County Auditor in the amount of five thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
I motion.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Uh, okay. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider Roden Bridge Precinct Three to provide installation-only services of the private driveway culverts. On Van Zant County Road thirty-five oh four.
Yes, Judge, this is, this is one of my deals. We're fixing to completely redo thirty-five oh four. We're gonna reclaim with, relate, and there's several places where they either don't have culverts. Or they're uh, salt tore up. It's not all of them, it's not a lot of them. Uh, but I would like to present it to the court that if these guys purchase their culverts, new culverts. That while we are doing the road, that we install their culvert from. While we're doing the road.
And that's critical for water.
Yes, sir. Right, cuz, cuz we're doing the ditches, we're cleaning all the ditches out, and if, if we clean their ditch out and their culverts.
I'm bad.
Well, I mean, we can't stop it, but if there's not one there that actually, I have to dig through their driveway and make it worse for them to get through. Or the culverts are bad, and unstop them, it's not gonna do any good. Then I think it's gonna create a, a big problem for us to still keep our roads in good condition after we rebuild the road. So I'm coming before the court asking for.
And just the labor, which you already have proved out there working, so it's not a special.
It's not a big, big deal.
It's the right thing, dude.
I thought, I think it is, uh, if they purchase.
I think it should be our policy.
You know, uh, I don't wanna go, I don't wanna come asking to purchase the culverts, cuz that could get very expensive for them. And uh, we all know that, that our material budgets are not.
You spend a hundred thousand dollars on a road, and then you compromise the integrity of it with a stopped-up three hundred dollar.
I don't think a sixty-five road, that can be due for a hundred.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, it's like.
Right, that's right. Uh, so, so I, I'm. I know, and I'm not asking for this to be on. Just whoever out here come to me and say, my culvert's bad, I need it replaced. I'm not asking for that. I'm only asking for thirty-five oh four at this time, that we will be working on to redo.
Do you have an idea how many culverts you're talking about?
I've, I'm gonna say probably, maybe as many as twenty. I have my, my foreman's counted them, he's checked them out. I haven't asked him how many yet.
You can get, you can bet that that's why you're having to rebuild the road.
Yes, it definitely, cuz, cuz this road has, has had a problem of, of water crossing it. And uh, you know, we can't, we can't keep our roads good unless we keep the water in the ditch. So I feel like that this is something that has to be done. And I, I ask y'all, um, to.
Okay, you made the motion?
I think you're saying that this is in the right way. It's not like somebody's private driveway.
It's, it's in our.
Easy. It's legal. I ta- I talked to Tac about it when we were at class, and they were, as, as long as it benefits other people that travel that road. And it does, because it, it protects the integrity of the road, so. It's legal.
Okay.
The, the commissioner's court somewhere, that, somewhere back, some for about the time that the um.
We used to put them all.
We used to put them all in, and then about the time we got the Roden Bridge tax, we took that service away from some, for some reason.
I can tell you why. I got two guys in here that can vouch for it, because that's all we were doing.
Right.
Yeah.
Used to, if I'm not mistaken, we even furnished the culverts.
We never, we never furnished the culvert, but if they bought it. We never, we never furnished the culvert, but if they bought it.
Okay.
Um, we put it in when I, when I tw- fifteen years ago. And the state actually allocates enough material for us that we can. Uh, that replant graph that we can put them in with that, so.
Yeah, and do you uh, set the requirements of what kind of culvert?
We, we said, we, we said, we have culvert programs and we tell them what size and we have a minimum length. Uh, also that they have to buy.
Okay.
That's Kelly way.
Yes, yes, it is. Okay. So a motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post like sign. Motion passes. Item number fifteen, discuss considering approve. Two, six month lease agreement and payment concerning belly dump trailer from Braz's trailers for precinct three.
I guess this is another one, though.
Yes, sir.
We, we lease our trailers, our belly dump trailers for Braz's trailers. And uh, every six months it comes up that we have to renew it and it's not what this is about. Uh, we already have the trailers. We've had the lease for several years, I think. It was through the previous court commissioner. Uh, and uh. We use these trailers every day.
So you're just, you're just basically renewing your current leases, correct?
Yes, sir.
So is there a motion?
I'm like that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh.
Good guy.
Ty, Ty goes the runner. All right. Cliff. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item sixteen, discuss consider approve order authorizing Memorial Day fireworks sales. Beginning May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five and ending midnight on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
Uh, motion is made. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. And uh. The, the legislature requires that we approve the sale of uh. Fireworks on certain days uh, of the year, uh, except for Christmas uh, in the year and the uh, July fourth. So.
If the, if the fire marshal said we're, we have a burn ban, then, then.
That is correct.
They can sell them, I just can't send them.
But if it keeps on doing what it's doing right now, I don't think you gotta worry about it. Hope it keeps on going.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post like sign. Motion passes. Item number seventeen, we will, at uh. We will now uh, go into closed executive session. One in compliance with section five-five-one point oh seven-four, the Texas government code to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, realignment duties. Discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee or to hear a complaint or charge against an officer or employee. Also, the second one will be in compliance with section five-five-one point oh seven-two, Texas government code to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. So we are now closing this session at uh, ten twenty-six, uh, no, ten twenty-three. And we will go into.